Chris, what happened last time?
There we go.
Uh, last time. Last time we put on a, uh, not a hullabaloo, what did we put on again? A hoopla, yes. So we put on a hoopla last time and it went, I think swimmingly. And, uh, we honored, uh, old, uh, Engeltrude and, uh, uh, delivered her there and back home and, um, uh, only a small amount of fuss was made from the, uh, uh, you know, um, provocations of the puppet troupe and, uh, and we're all perfectly placed now as well as we could be for the, uh, for the meeting. I, I think that's about, about it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think that is right. Uh, all the different arrangements were made for the greatest hoopla of all time. You put on a performance. There was a puppet show, um, about see a goblin throw a rock is, is the new song for town, the town now and all kinds of stuff. Yeah, I think that's where we're at. Um, so the town awakens the next day from the greatest hoopla. Perhaps a bit hungover. Um, and I'm just going to launch right into it. Uh, I'm kind of getting a hankering for getting back out in the woods and back into the dungeons and stuff. Um, so, uh, the first thing when you awaken on your 13th day in the evening lands is in short order, someone comes to Brandon's house and, uh, is kind of snooping around. And you hear a voice as they're, they're like, um, excuse me, excuse me, hello? And they're just like rustling around outside in front of, of Brandon's house.
All right, um, uh, Bashaw goes up, first he opens the high, higher eye slit, closes it and then opens the lower eye slit. Yeah, and just kind of stares through.
Um, you, he sees these eyes, uh, you see a hobbit, of course, wearing their safety hat, a pot. But otherwise, in a fine, uh, long coat, uh, a fine outfit. And it's a man. And, uh, he's surprised to see these eyes pop out and he's like, oh dear. Uh, uh, hello, um, I'm here to see the big people.
All right, kind of stares, closes it and it opens the door.
He looks up to you, oh, um, yes, well, uh, it's a pleasure to meet you. And he bows low. Uh, and he's like, my name is, um, Fury Thornborough. He waits for a moment and then he mutters to himself, he's like, hmm, strange that they don't bow back.
Well, I will stand and bow back.
Oh, he looks at it like as if some, as, as if something exotic is happening.
What can we do for you?
Um, well, um, I represent a mercantile, uh, uh, a presence in town. Uh, I, I am the proprietor of Thornborough's Needles and, um, if you'll forgive me, I, I was, uh, well, I was sent here by Rohtrude. And he starts kind of looking at you all, uh, and like looking at each of you, uh, looking up and down and stuff.
Bashaw brings him tea.
Oh, thank you. He invites himself in at that.
Right, starts looking, getting up, getting his sash with his hat, his bounder's cat hat pinned to it. It's like, uh, so what's, what's all Rohtrude needing? Is it, uh, time for the meeting or?
He's, he sees you like where the bounder's sash like a scarf. And he's like, yes, uh, about that, uh, Rohtrude, um, uh, she sent me because, uh, she had said that you had very important business and she wanted, uh, as part of that, that, uh, well, they paid for you to, uh, to have some tailoring done. And she, you know, you're just wearing like your tunic or whatever it is that you've had since everything that's happened since, uh, Perrinfall City, since you last had it laundered there. Um, and, uh, and then the bounded sash, just like a, a scarf, you know, and yeah.
Look awesome in my armor. I don't know what you're talking about.
My coat is.
But yes, the tabards could probably use some worse.
Uh, that smelled worse.
It's a, it will take some work, but I should have something ready by tomorrow. Uh, uh, she, uh, uh, the, uh, the order of good manners is, uh, well, they've pulled the stops on financing your, uh, preparation for the meeting tomorrow. Uh, strange in my opinion, just for a town hall meeting, but, uh, they're paying customers and, uh, you are guests, so, um, I can measure you for an, an suit if you would like.
Uh, that would be delightful.
Um, yeah, yeah. Can you match it with my coat? I've got my, my old sewer coat.
The sewer coat? Yeah, let's see.
Um, it's velveteen, but yeah.
He, uh, he lays, he goes out to a cart and comes back in with some tools to take measurements and things. And he has a design book. And, uh, he specializes in seven different hobbit attire designs, um, which you can choose. Um, you can choose, uh, either charm, which could include things like a long coat, cravat and top hat, um, for gentlemen. Or, uh, a lure, which includes things like a tweed jacket and a fez, uh, a look. Should be like a silk waistcoat scarf, uh, or a profession, which could be things like, um, um, something that kind of indicates, you know, your profession, uh, subtlety, which can include things like a, a fine felt cloak and hood and stuff, Lederhosen will make for you. Wrangling, uh, which, uh, includes stockings and a capitan hat and woodcraft. And these are the, the, the types of categories you see in his design book.
I'll take the charm.
As, uh, as he leaves to get his tool, Bashaw kind of slips away.
All right.
Arden was looking at the catalog because he's kind of a foppish what they're in it. So he wants the one with makes of a spoke suit. That shows that he's kind of a stonemason and that's kind of his job on the side.
Okay, yeah, a profession. What would, uh, what would a professional suit for a stonemason look like? I wonder. What would a fancy suit for a dwarf look like?
Yeah.
It would be something between a three-piece suit with vest and, uh, and a, and a utility jacket with like, uh, like a, what are the, the LBE, you know, load bearing, the load bearing vest?
Well, it's like a symbolic like tool belt, but not really a tool belt. It's symbolic. It really was, you know, something like that.
Not too symbolic.
Yeah, but you could, you could hang a hammer on it.
Put a hammer to it.
Yeah. That's entirely decorative, yet somehow a hundred percent functional. Exactly.
You can hang on calipers, you know?
All right.
It's, uh, everything you need to get started again.
Uh, and then Ben, what does Ben do?
Ooh, he's, he's looking back and forth that charm and then was it subtlety? Hmm, it's really, really tempting, but, uh, I guess I'll go with the, the subtlety even.
All right. So that's Lederhosen and a fine felt cloak with hood. Okay. Um, all right. He takes measurements. He asks about your design choices and you can pick on different things. It takes about an hour or two and then he leaves, uh, to prepare personally and for the rest of the day, presumably, your outfit for tomorrow.
Uh, of course, the cost associated with all this.
Uh, being offered.
Yeah, uh, according to him, the matronly order of good manners has paid for it.
Okay.
Which is odd.
We can always tip.
Because they have sort of been your adversaries until recently.
Well, I think it was a good idea to put old Engeltrude front and center last night.
Um, you do have the rest of the day.
Yeah, let's strike out and scout the goblins.
Okay, all right. I will move you to the map. Um, I may have mentioned this before, but this isn't the overland scheme for like the whole game, but, um, I've had fun with this, with this, uh, some people call it baby's first text crawl, which I'll take, um, cause it's just one mile squares.
It works.
Yeah, no, I'm having fun with it. Um, all right. And, and in that I'll use the VTT that you have a general sense of where you've been. And I won't hide that from you or anything. So you don't have to like draw or something, but, um,
So let's hug the river, uh, same as before and, uh, make our way to the tree bridge there.
River. To the tree bridge. That's three. All right. When you depart today, actually I need to roll for this as well. You all have had, if I recall correctly, I'm running a bunch of different games and I'll have weather. But if I recall correctly, you all have had uncanny luck with the weather. Uh, it's actually kind of dried up. Um, and I would say that's probably what you've noticed with the stream. Um, it's been almost two weeks of a dry streak. So that's pretty hot and dry.
We inadvertently roll a droat.
Yeah, yeah. You have, uh, you, I do know you had one rainstorm, um, as you were going into the, uh, um, into the cairn, but otherwise it's been really dry. So it's a nice, uh, sunny day, uh, with good visibility, going into the woods, you don't encounter anything all the way up as you follow the stream into the mossy peat area where the troll was. And you come up to the bridge or this, uh, big tree that's over the river that kind of acts as a bridge. Where to next?
Cross the bridge.
Okay, um, this all takes you, um, it's now been about four hours into the day. Uh, so as you started in the morning, it's only, you know, late morning still, so.
Meeting is tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow evening, right?
Tomorrow evening. That's right.
Yeah, so there and back.
There and back.
No problems. What could go wrong?
Exactly, right. You can see a hill rising up, uh, that you were on before where the bat mosquito things attacked you and the, uh,
Yeah, let's make our way all the way back to where the path diverged to where we thought the goblins were going.
All right.
Oh yeah, I know. Okay, yeah.
All right. You come up to, uh, a place in the woods where the woods thicken here, but otherwise, um, it looks like, um, uh, you haven't encountered anything yet, except that it's clear to you that there are trails. They're not very well hidden at all. If in fact, anyone tried to hide these trails. And given what you've seen, it shows the markings of things that have been dragged off your carts and little feet. And they're all leading further into the woods. There is this kind of like slightly more clear area here you can see, and that's where the trail leads.
We shall go.
Okay. Whoops.
Shaw can, uh, scout ahead for a little bit. This is one of the few areas that he's useful.
All right, uh, make a, don't you have a for, um, I'm missing, I might be mixing this up with hero's journey. Uh, don't you have a, it's not called a forestry die. It's called, um, the mechanic for a ranger, the main one is a tracking.
Yeah, I can, uh, there's tracking and then there's one where I, uh, have a potential to be able to sneak up on a target. Uh, kind of like a remain unseen. So that's, uh, on a one to three. Uh, tracking I also have and I can.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do those and also do a dexterity and I'll do my rule where you know, if you pass the skill test, which is much harder, I'll give you something better.
Okay, so here comes the decks.
I want to tell you, Ross, I get two first level spells at third level. And the second spell is going to be detect danger.
Interesting. I haven't looked at it, but I've.
Okay, so I've got animal friendship and detect danger.
Bless you.
Sorry.
Nice. Um, detect danger.
Base for tracking. Oh, I better roll the D six too. Or do you want to roll the D six?
Uh, and it's, uh, what is it? The D six is for?
Uh, one to three, that's for my, uh, sneaking.
Oh yeah, I'll, we'll do that. Okay.
My tracking, the base is forty. Uh, and then depends on the variables, whether or not things are, uh, added. So plus two for creature beyond the first. So depending on how many there are, I get a plus two. Uh, for each additional thing beyond one, uh, where other tracks mingle minus fifty. Age of tracks minus, minus five percent for twelve hours, every twelve hours.
I, I would say you can probably do your base one. I don't think that there's like a lot of, except that it's in a forest.
All right, here comes, and nope.
Okay.
Wah wah.
In that case, I think this is what happens. Um, ch ch ch, couple of things. Um, the tracking doesn't go well. Um, I think maybe there's something, it looks like things have been dragged here. And it serves the purpose of obscuring the numbers and what has gone through this area. But as you're trying to track them, a surprising thing happens, uh, and you can roll a D six.
Nope, wrong one. Oh, okay. I triple clicked that. Sorry. Hang on. There we go. One.
Aren't you surprised on a one?
Only surprised on a one.
Okay, uh, unfortunately, what you see then is you see four goblins. Um, and it suddenly dawns on you, you see a, um, let me see how I can describe this, a, uh, you see what appears to be the skeleton of a castle crumbling rocks and ivy. The ruins of a temple dedicated to some strange forgotten wild god. You can tell that this is the case evidenced by images of flowering vines on columns outside weathered leafy faces within the stonework. Um, and four goblins run inside, having seen you, alerting the rest of them.
All right, he, uh, returns to the group, tells them what he saw and then also said, they saw me.
Time, do we need to be heading back yet?
It is, uh, probably early afternoon at this point.
We do need to be heading back. Let's get the hell out of here.
It's like, well, we know where they're at.
All right. You're going to try to smeg it back to Brandon's for you? Is that the goal?
Yep.
All right.
Grab evil mind.
Now, is there a chance, do we, do we see what their response is like? Like, do goblins come flooding out? After us or?
I assume if you leave right away, then no. Uh, and this, I think this, there is something you can infer from that. That whatever they had hoped to get, they must've picked clean. And they've consolidated into that castle for whatever it is they're doing. Uh, because there's not like patrols and outposts and you don't see other things of goblins like carrying stuff around through the woods like you've seen. And in fact, you traveled all this way and so far you haven't encountered any goblins. Um, although we'll see if that changes. Uh, Bashaw, you can roll a D six again.
Six.
A six. Okay, so, um, you can tell that you're being followed. Um, there are, uh, several of these things, uh, they've been tracking you through the woods. Um, the current group of them, uh, you realize this as you come up on the river. You get the sense that you're being followed. There are, uh, they're probably a hundred yards away or so.
All right, as we're walking, uh, Bashaw casually, uh, takes his bow out and says, um, act naturally, but we're being followed.
Any idea how many?
Can I tell how many I?
Somewhere between a half dozen to a dozen.
In my short bow too. How big do they seem to be?
They're very small.
Try a little to get a bow.
Their motto here is Sunday.
The goblins. Should we try to kill the long?
Yeah, if we go across the bridge, we can, uh, is it, uh, kill pocket?
Well, what's our? That's assuming that they choose to follow us across the bridge.
Yeah.
True. Can I?
Other way.
Yeah, I guess we know they're there. I can't imagine I'd be able to hear any, anything better than what Bashaw did listening. Um, do we want to set up an ambush like we're getting and see if they investigate or?
Yeah, let's do an ambush.
Uh, do you?
Know that turns have tabled.
You cross the bridge or do you, uh, where do you, uh, set the ambush up?
So across the bridge, uh, what's it look like across the bridge? Is it right on the, uh, the forest?
You can kind of see on the map that there's a little bit of an open area there. That's like a mossy peaty, peat kind of, kind of place, uh, soggy ground. Uh, that's a good, uh, maybe twenty to forty yards from the tree line. And then there is this huge tree, you know, that crosses all the way and it almost in the shape of a tr- of a bridge.
Um, I think it's more important to try to kill them than it is to try to lure them across the bridge.
Yeah, I'm afraid if we try and get across the bridge, they just ambush us where we're on that narrow spot if they're that close. I mean, how far they're, they're on to us. So I don't know, you know, if they're familiar with the territory too. So I assume it's not like we could, unless we just make a break for it and they may have, uh,
If, uh, if they're goblins, a good way to ambush them, uh, is if all of us at the same time, kind of just turn around and go, ah, and run at them like you would like, uh, uh, like a dog or something like that, like, ah.
Yes, well, I agree.
All right.
Yeah.
So you're gonna, you're all gonna turn toward the threat and just, uh, just yell?
Well, wait for the first clearing. Well, I, I really follow some good clues. I don't know.
I'm thinking wherever they're at, but we went, whenever we get ready to turn, I want to see if I can hide and maybe a little ways back. And if I get too close and they see them on to me, I might make a break for it. Uh, but if we could, yeah. I'd like to at least try to hide so I can get a little jump on them. And once you guys start attacking.
And with that, I'm switching my bow for the, uh, battle axe. A little for some looking.
Back to back, my friend.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand the goal. I understand Ben that you're going to try to hide right after. I've already rolled and then, um, everybody's trying to scare them by like turning and then, okay, in that case.
Shake their morale, I guess, but, uh, and then, and then go after them, pursue them to the death.
Let's do one more D six to see if that works. Uh, Bashaw roll a D six. I'll roll mine in secret here.
Here comes. I got a six.
A six, okay. Uh, you turn around and yell and, uh, at first it looks like they're scattering, but they, uh, it's obvious they're taking positions in the trees to start firing at you.
Oh. Arrow is very dangerous. Fall back.
You are running?
They've, if they've got artillery, we should probably back off if they've got bows and arrows.
What's the plan? Are, are you all running? Are you going to fight?
Either.
See approximate range?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it's, uh, so they'll have a penalty, but they can move into position to fire at you if you try to flee across the bridge.
So the bridge is sitting ducks for, if they've got artillery, we're kind of sitting ducks on the bridge. I'd say we're almost better engaging them in the woods where they can't get as clear shots.
Right, so let me kind of frame some options unless you all have other ideas, of course. You could run across the bridge and you'll make it. But they'll have a chance to try to hit you, uh, but it'll be at a penalty. Um, you could turn and fight right now. And that includes like trying to get into cover and fighting amongst the trees and all that kind of stuff. Or third, you also could not try to make it across and not fight, but dive into the trees to try to find a place to get cover, to hide, you know, or to try to evade. The downside to doing that obvious will, will be that you might travel some time and away from Brandon'sford, which could be fine or I don't know, you know, who knows?
What about going into the trees and then closing the distance?
That's option two. So any, you know, you could.
How far away are they?
Uh, they are about a hundred yards away, but getting closer.
Drop the battle axe with a bow. Not dropping it, but I'm switching.
Okay, and then, uh,
Yeah, I like option two. Cause Bashaw's already got his bow out, so.
Yeah, I've, I've got a bow too, now that I think about it. All right, so, so yeah, let's do that.
Let me set this up. Hmm. Did you all take your retainers with you? Huh?
I assume we brought the two guys with us. But we didn't ex, didn't say that.
We didn't say anything about it.
Okay, maybe not. Okay, maybe not this time.
Kind of like I meant to buy a swing or an arrow before we left too. That was like, at the end of last game, I'm like, that's what I needed to do, forgot.
I apologize, I haven't updated your image yet. I just haven't, haven't done it yet.
What's your dex?
Mine or please?
You have a bonus, I guess, is what I mean. You're proficient with it, but.
Yeah, I got a plus one to dex.
I got a fourteen.
I can hand you my bow, Ben.
Alright.
I have eighteen arrows.
Get them ready.
Okay, so top of, before anything else, what's like the plan? I heard like trying to go into the forest and taking cover or you know, you do have cover nearby, you could try to do that. There, it looks like they're also taking cover and about to fire. That looks like, like they're, that's what their approach is gonna be.
We need to, first of all, get to cover and then plan, and then advance undercover. So I, I'd like to move.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be moving right away. I'm moving low, staying low as I can. I guess maybe I can make a dex roll or something. I don't know. But
I thought, take cover and attempt to hide is what I was gonna try.
Alright.
Just trying to close the distance, drawing my sword because I gave my bow to Ben and I probably can't engage this turn, but I hope I can engage next turn.
Alright, Tharnwin roll a D six for initiative.
That was mine anyways.
Alright, you are able to act first, so if anybody is moving or firing a missile, you can go ahead and move, fire missile and roll for damage and attack with melee if you're closing.
I'm firing from a hundred. Well, you better have an AC of nine or less, which I doubt, so I missed. Okay, fifteen, oh, right.
Gotta get a thirteen.
Awesome.
Well, I don't know what my max range would be from here to there.
I'll say that you can dash out into the open and make it to one of them if you're attempting to get to them and attack them.
That's my, that's my rule. Yes, I am.
No, I mean, the goblins, are they wearing armor?
No, it doesn't look like it. No, yeah. Yeah, it looks like they just have like scraps of stu- stuff and improvised weapons. Okay, so, and then Ben, what, what are you, so I know you tried to hide and then what else? So from hiding, what are you trying to do?
And can I try and hide and then take a shot? Would I be able to do that with the bow or is that hiding and take my whole turn?
No, yeah, go for it. You can attack with a bow.
Okay.
And Edward, you can go ahead and roll the hit and roll your damage if you have it.
Nope.
Misses. Alright, and then what about?
Ooh. Um, I guess that's three damage because it's a plus one sword and I roll the one.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, it's print plus one.
Doesn't it have a plus three against creatures of chaos and like thing, fae chaos things?
Does it?
I believe so. I believe it's a plus one sword unless it's, you know, kind of done in the spirit of Sir Brandon, like you're fighting fairies and dragons and stuff like that.
Things are included then. Uh, then it's six damage.
Alright, so you easily describe how you kill this one.
Here's some rush and a, and a, a violent swing from above. He is cloven.
Yep, and then, alright.
Across diagonally across the chest.
That makes it their turn and this one is going to attempt to attack you. Seventeen hits. It does with, so it does two damage. And the others are going to move, they're gonna rush their foes emboldened by this to attack. And Ben, your ploy failed.
Figured it would.
You're not hidden.
That's pretty much like, what, not even a fifty percent chance of success until you're level seven, so.
Edward, you take one more point of damage. Well, I also rolled your D twenty, but it also failed.
Fair enough.
So Edward, you take one more point of damage and then Bashaw, two of them are attacking you, you take five points of damage and eleven does not hit, right?
Yeah, it does.
Eleven hits, yeah, because you're trying to move light and another six points of damage. And then Tharnwin does a ten hit?
AC is fourteen, so no.
Alright, so you're able to block this thing's blow and kick it back away from you. Ben, this other little goblin lunges into the forest, into the bushes, does an eleven hit Ben?
Does not. I believe it's either twelve or thirteen.
He lands squealing with the rabid feral noises into the bushes nearby, unable to get to you. And Ben, you can roll a D six for initiative.
Oh, did you say Ben rolled D six?
Yeah.
Alright.
You all have the initiative, but is there, do you all have any plans or are you gonna just try to kill them quickly and hopefully kill them quickly, I guess? Or do you have any tricks, any stunts you want to try?
Bashaw needs to run away in order to shoot.
Yeah.
So yeah, Bashaw's gonna run away.
My, my trick then will be to cover his escape by leaving my current attacker behind and bum rushing the guy that was striking him.
Okay.
I don't know if that counts as a stunt, but I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna spit on this guy and leave him in my dust.
Yeah, I know that works.
I'll send to him later.
You, you do, you kick up some dust and spit on him and it distracts him and you rush across back on the other side of the field. And these goblins turn to face you, which allows Bashaw the reprieve to be able to do a fighting withdrawal and use his bow. Any other stunts?
Cause I got a goblin in the bushes at me, so I'm gonna have to try and take him out before I can try anything else.
You wanna, you wanna try to hide? I mean, you can try it again and it's not gonna take your turn.
Okay, yeah, if I can try and hide and know if I'd be able to with him on me or not, if I can, I will definitely try.
Alright, yeah, because he, he jumped into the bushes, so it may be just that he doesn't even know where you are. I'm looking for my D twenty now, which I need for this. Here it is, maybe. Alright. You'll get half of your bonus for that, not the full one. And alright, and you also have the initiative, so if you're moving, you can move your token now. Except that Bashaw and Edward already moved and then if you're attacking, you can attack and roll for damage. Just go ahead and do all.
I'm doing a I'm gonna lunge but fighting withdrawal afterwards, so I'm not gonna turn my back, okay, so.
Yeah.
It's like half, half the speed going backwards, right? So. Oops, nope.
I've learned in the, in our OD and D game, I modify the combat procedure to what makes sense anymore. I don't, I don't rigidly adhere to it.
I'm gonna be going for that top goblin there.
Alright, it looks like Bashaw, like you fire another arrow into that wounded goblin.
So, did I get enough of the ducking in the bushes to get a backstab on this guy?
Yeah, half of it. You get half of the, yeah.
So plus two instead of plus four? Alright, alright, well then I guess I'll, yeah, draw my short bow, heft my ax, my hand axe and try and cave in his head, let's see.
I'll also say you have cover though. Oh crap, okay. It's weird how it's picked the names and then.
Yeah, ooh, and I'm rolling great.
Alright. Oh, did you, did you hit? Did anybody hit? I should just say, anybody hit thirteen? Okay.
Brian, so an eight is not.
Alright. Yeah, for, for one damage.
Both attacks are rolled.
These two, they jump back into the bushes. I'm sorry, this is, this one's dead, but I'm moving out of the way. They jump back into cover, into the bushes. They now have cover. They start firing arrows into the, into the fray. One of them trying to hit Bashaw, or I'm sorry, Ben. Let's see.
He's somewhat hidden though, right?
Misses. Well, I was gonna give him a cover. So two of them are going to try that, but it's at a minus two and so it misses and then let's see, one of them's gonna try to jump in and try to, try to find you. If, if he, if he manages to do so, I'm just gonna give him a one to two range. Then he succeeds. You can, you no longer gain the benefits of hiding and now he is going to try to attack you because he found you. Sixteen.
That'll do it.
One point of damage and then Edward, your, your plan worked and now you have their attention. They're gonna attack you. Does, a thirteen does not hit, right?
Does not hit.
Nice. That does not hit. And a fourteen, does a fourteen hit?
Nope, no.
Alright, so then you just like, all these things start to just turn around and start fighting you and your blade is like a storm, just like swinging back and forth, singing in the air, beating them back.
If only it was actually hitting them, that would be great.
Yeah, and Edward, you can roll a D six for initiative. Any stunts or plans, retreats or spells this turn?
Two.
Two, okay, they're able to go first. Any plans, stunts, retreats, spells, anything like that? No? Alright.
I'm gonna see, I would like to see if I can knock two of their heads together.
Yeah, okay. When I get to, they're able to act first. Don't let me forget that though. Three of them are going to try to attack you again, Edward. Nineteen hits, six damage. And that one misses. And that one misses, okay. So you're talking about knocking their heads together and like you're beating one back and then one flies over the other one, you beat that one back and then finally one actually gets you in the arm with its nasty rusted disgusting blade that it has, letting loose some blood. Now, these two are gonna try to attack Ben, who is no longer hidden, but, but you still have the benefits of cover. There's a sixteen hit.
Oh, that'll do it.
And a nat twenty.
Oh, Ben may be going down.
For eight points of damage.
I'm barely up. Some third level.
Need to get a cleric. And then there's another goblin that's trying to hit Ben right there.
Oh yeah, so I may not be up for much longer.
Alright, it misses mercifully and now it's your all's turn.
Oh boy.
And retreat.
Yeah, can I retreat into the bushes and?
Yeah, they're gonna try to flee.
Well, I want to get away from this guy and duck into some more bushes outside if I can, but.
Yeah, so.
The knocking, I'm gonna just try to shove them all together into a pile or something. I don't know, just overpower them for a second and run.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand the group goal first. Is the, is the goal to just, are we running? Because it looks like they're still up and fighting and Ben's almost dead. And you all are also missing good points.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so if the group goal is to run, then I think, let me kind of frame it this way. Edward, if you choose to try to do a stunt, then they'll get a free round on you. But, but otherwise, everyone will be able to run and I won't even check the evasion procedure. So that's my deal. Since you're there and you're saying that you're gonna try to slam their heads together and throw them into a pile and then flee and stuff and it'll be well, they'll get to, yeah.
Alright.
But if you don't like the deal, I could reframe it into some other options or you can propose.
Well, I mean, anyone got any better ideas?
No.
Not really.
It's been a pleasure playing with you guys.
Alternately, I can say that you can make a skill check and you can do that, but if you fail, the archers in the bushes will be able to fire at Ben. Because that's their target. Ben is in cover.
Yes, what kind of skill check?
It would be like a strength skill check.
To do what? To do the same thing?
No, it would be like, so basically you wouldn't get the benefits of like distracting these guys, but you would be throwing these people into a pile and then running past them. So it wouldn't help Ben, you know, or you can create a ruckus and act as a distraction and then do that, but you don't have to make a check and then they'll just get one attack on you.
Let's try that. Let's try the first version, the one that helps Ben.
Alright, okay. You, what do you yell out at the goblins then?
I didn't know I had to yell anything.
They're getting their attention, I suppose, but they'll, I'll go ahead and start rolling.
See.
Nat one.
Hey, good start.
Six.
Eight.
Six. These, these aren't gonna get a penalty. Does a seventeen hit?
It certainly does.
Okay, you take one point of damage. And then does a twelve hit?
No.
Alright, and all of that, you take one point of damage, so I imagine you do a spectacle of some kind.
I, I, you know. Sword will strike you all down.
Uh, yeah.
But not today.
You raise the sword into the air and brandish it around and they kind of cower and then these arrows fly past you, one of them barely misses you and then you're able to jump over their, their prone and scared bodies and you all flee into the wilderness.
Just run.
Yep, fall back. Sorry, I lost your arrow back there. Didn't do me much good.
What is this circle in the map? What is that?
Is that the AOE of the exploding goblin?
I, I do not know what that is or how that got there. Browser. Yeah, I don't know what that is. Okay, well anyways, I think it might be a range. Oh, here it is, it's a range. There we go. Alright, so you're able to flee. The other downside is that I doubt that you would just get to flee, like you're running into the woods. Do you make it away from them? So I'm gonna start these checks over. So now I think it's a matter of getting home and not getting Ben killed. Alright. Nothing shows up on this side of the river and you all try to make it back across, kind of circum circumnavigating so that you stay away from the goblins, okay?
Pretty sure. Pretty sure.
All right. And you make it back to Brandon'sford. I don't think you'll get credit for those goblins. You can get credit for one goblin, but. All right. You make it back. Uh, not, Ben's not doing too well.
Holding my guts in here.
Well, how many hit points do you have left?
I have two.
Oof. Ah, that's pretty good.
I have four.
Oh, wow. And you guys took max hit points for level two, right?
Yeah.
And you rolled for a level three. I think most of you.
Rolled for level three. I took two. I have eleven total. I got, lucky I'm, I've rolled a three on level three, so.
Actually take my hit points for level three.
Oh yeah, totally roll that sucker and get your hit points. Yeah. Uh, but anyways, uh, you make it back and it's now evening time. What do you do?
We, uh, we. We have to bandage our wounds.
You go back to Brandon's house and.
And then we go, and then we go get a drink.
I was gonna say, I get a drink with some, you know, try and get some pity drinks.
Remember that tea.
And maybe we go, uh, knock on the apothecary's door.
And I wanna, you know, I feel bad because I did not take my own advice. I'm gonna try and find, get me a sling and some rocks.
All right. The sling will be the standard price, uh, in old school essentials and then rocks are free, obviously. Um, and then, uh, so to kind of top to bottom here, you all go see Ingrid, the apothecary. She's not at the bar. Okay. Um, you go down to the south edge of town where the wall towers cast a shadow over, uh, a little hut, like, uh, hobbit, uh, house. And, um, if you knock on the door, uh, a, a li, a woman, a little wabbit, hobbit woman answers. Open the door like, uh, hello? Oh, it's the big people. Well, can I hea, oh, you don't look well. Looks at Ben.
No, no, not so much. Actually, um, actually I do have this witch's potable. I forgot about. Is that a healing potion?
Uh, what is it again?
It was a, it was, it's witch's potable. It was one of the, uh, potion we got from Vivian, the witch, I believe.
Oh my gosh. I don't have any idea. Let me look. That was a long time ago.
Basically a po, healing potion is my understanding, but I could be wrong.
You know, I, that's probably so far back in my notes. I'm gonna be honest. Let's just say it is. And so you could use it as healing potion. Uh, uh, Ingrid, uh, she is also like, um, I can, uh, uh, if you have, uh, the money for the materials, I, I do have some, some things to help heal you. I'll, I'll bind your wounds. In the meantime, everybody can roll a D three. I think it is, right? D three plus, well, it's just D three, right? Per day.
Yeah, one to three points per call correctly. Healing. Natural healing.
Death at zero hit points.
What's your, what's your constitution bonus?
Plus the con bonus? Okay. Yeah. It says D three hit points per day. It does not mention the con bonus. Isn't that something? But I think it does affect your total hit points.
Yes, total hit points. Yeah. Well, I got two back.
Yep.
All right. Uh, so she's taking the time to, uh, to bind your wounds and everything. Uh, she says, um, I, I can also give you something to, to help, uh, the wounds heal more quickly. Um, it, uh, I'm, I'm low on supplies though. I, I'm afraid that I, I, I would need to charge you. I'm so sorry. And, uh, she's like, I, it's a tea I can make, um, uh, it's a, a hundred silver pennies each, uh, for the tea, but, um, it'll, uh, it'll heal you over time.
Not a problem.
All right.
Yeah. I just look over to, to Michelle like, oh yeah, you're handling the.
You can send the bill to, uh,
Oh yes, to the.
To, uh, master, uh, what's his name?
You tell her, you, do you tell her that?
Hertelard or whatever.
Everard the third?
Yeah. Um.
Well, yeah, because, you know, it's credit. He's extended credit, so.
Yeah. Um, she, uh, stops for a moment and she's like, I, I can't believe that you would work with someone like that. He's made life so hard for everyone here in the Shire. But I.
He's done that.
What'd you say?
How has he done that?
Well, a lot of people don't care or take notice to it, but the reason that gold is controlled here is because of Everard and the bank. They, uh, uh, even before the dwarves stopped showing up, uh, businesses started to close and, uh, he's, they were controlling, uh, how many goods we could sell and trade. And if you ask me, the bank was starting to take over the Shire.
I see. Well, something else needs attending to after the dragon.
We'll deal with him day after tomorrow.
Yes. Once we handle the goblins and the dragon, we'll get, we'll fix your, your snake problem too.
Nonetheless, nonetheless, our gold is with him and.
So I just want to make sure I understand. When you say that you want to put on credit, do you mean like in the debt of the bank? Or do you mean like sort of literally like a credit card? Like, hey, that, that stuff's at the bank. Send the bill to the bank.
Kind of like a debit card.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure that I understand it. All right. Yeah. Uh, in that case, it's how many people are getting one of these? What it does, it'll give you, she makes you a tea. She puts a tea on. At first it smells really gnarly and it starts to pop in the kettle. Uh, it has this really pungent smell to it. Um, and it, and it tastes strong too. Uh, but it's also very invigorating. Uh, and it kind of just clears you up and you feel, uh, tingling throughout your body when you drank it. It's a, she's like, this is a mandrake root and it's becoming increasingly hard to get. And that's a shame because there's plenty of mandrake out, root out in the forest. If only I could get some. Uh, it's, it's a hundred silver pennies for a kettle. Uh, so this is a, it's a, out of character. It's a hundred silver pennies per person. Uh, per kettle and a kettle heals one hit dice, which you can roll. So whatever your hit die is, you can roll that and it'll heal you over four hours. So, you know, you could take two of these and by the morning you'll do two hit die, dice.
I will definitely be getting one.
Okay. Is everybody else doing one or people want more than one?
If I can get two of those.
Two of us.
Yes, two.
Only good for now, so I can't, you'll use it. I'm not damaged.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Lucky.
So, uh, sounds like five hundred silver pennies then.
Okay. Which are you still, uh, dredging?
Yep. I'm keeping track of that.
All right.
Edward, are you getting two?
Yes.
One. Okay. The Shaw will also get two to be safe.
All right. Well, you all can roll your hit dice as well for whatever you get back. Um.
Okay. I'm sure gonna, yeah. Four hours later, I chug it again.
I got a total of four back from that.
Nice.
Oh, that's not nice. My hit dice is D six.
That's pretty good.
I got five.
I'm actually back to full with that as seven and I healed two naturally, so. Gets me back up to eleven.
Let me see if I have.
It's all right.
What? I gotta fix this. Oh, well, I guess I can't. I hate that. All right. Um. So after this, you all head to the tavern, right? Which, uh, which tavern do you head to?
The, uh, the, the one that we helped out.
Okay. So you go to the golden egg tavern. Um, it's a homey place with, uh, open bay windowed fronts, uh, front, uh, front to it all. Um, smaller on the inside than the clumsy fox, uh, but busy this evening with quite a few hobbits that are there. Quinn, the white beard and, uh, a, a bony appearance, but still now a, a smile and cheerfulness. Uh, he's like, uh, oh friends, it's good to see you. Come on in, come on in. And, uh, cheerfully welcomes you and, uh, is like, but let me get you something to drink. It's on the house. Please, you're not charged here in this tavern. I'll bring you out some food too.
Mighty kind of you, Quinn. We certainly could use it today.
Absolutely. I, oh, I, I'm sorry that you've had, uh, an unfortunate day, but, uh, yes, uh, of course, um, and, uh, that was quite the hoopla yesterday as well. And then, and then like a bunch of other people, like kinda a bunch of other hobbits turn around and, and kinda take notice of you as well. So you have.
Enjoyed yourself. It, uh, helped everybody.
What'd you say?
I hope it helped everybody.
I, I certainly think so. Uh, I, things have been kind of tense around here, if you ask me. And I think it was a mighty fine thing to do. We needed a party.
Uh, says, um, I don't remember any of it, but I'm pleased others had a good time.
Um, Cedric is in here, the general store clerk person. He seems to be wearing especially nice clothes. He, uh, raises his mug and smiles at you. He's surrounded by other people who it's clear that he's paid for their meal. Um, you can also. Uh, George Billbury is here, uh, also sitting with, uh, with Cedric. And, um, it seems that George Billbury is starting to come back out of his shell. That, uh, a lot of the hunters, isol, uh, solitary folk, um, keeping to their lodge. All gone now. George has come back into hobbit society and, um, it doesn't look like Nob, uh, Squints and Nob Squints and Ned are here. Uh, they, um, seems like they, uh, they stick to the clumsy fox, uh, to drink. Uh, but there is, uh, you do see, uh, Bosco, um, Ned and Squint's old paw, the farmer. And, uh, Papo the puppeteer is drinking here, cause this is the establishment that would let, uh, Papo and her friends be here. Um, and, uh, also Hartmut, the bounder lieutenant is here drinking this evening. And then you see, uh, two other groups of hobbits that you don't know.
Collection of fine hobbitses.
A group of them cheer you. Um, at this one, some of the hobbits you don't know, one of them ga, uh, stands in front of the fireplace, starts telling stories. And all the hobbits like.
Buy them around.
The storyteller?
Yes. And, and his buddies, yeah.
All right.
Is he playing a bow run?
Playing a what?
Is he playing a bow run?
Oh, beca, what? A bow run?
Oh, it's the Irish drum.
Oh, no, uh, it's, it's not musical, although they, uh, they also like to put on songs at night. You've heard many of them. Uh, but, uh, he, uh, he claims that, um, uh, let's see here. Uh, I don't need that one anymore. He, uh, he, he actually starts, uh, so when, when Tharnlin, Tharnlin pays for a drink, he says, that's awfully kind of you, sir. Um, you know, we have stories of big folk that have been here and have done things in the past. And we've always kept a good relationships with Grif's Vale and, uh, with Rebic and with the dwarves north of the black spine mountains. Why? It was some seasons ago when a big folk ranger was sniffing around in the hedges and he had a run in with some bounders. And he tells this story about how like the bounders thought they were getting hunted and all kinds of stuff, but it was actually a ranger and he was protecting them and all this kind of stuff.
Intently and we compliment him on the story that he's telling. And I mentioned something about like, we look forward to more of the trade and relationships between the dwarves north of here and the Shire.
You say that at the end of the story, they all, they all cheer. Um,
Yes, of course.
Yeah. Uh, at this, several of the hobbits like come over and they, uh, they bring their drinks over and they start asking about that. Like they start asking about, um, about, uh, I, I have a, a word in my, stuck in my head and I can't think of the Carnbaldar and, uh, about the, uh, the mountains and hills north of the black spine mountains and, um, some of them ask about places you've heard of and, and different things, but uh, some of them ask about cities, um, uh, south of you, uh, that are dwarven cities. Um, the, the dwarven lord, uh, Nuris Grek, which you've never heard of. Um, and, uh, the, the blood feud of the dwarves and Rebic and things. And they start asking for rumors and stuff. Uh, but you haven't heard, you know what Rebic is? It's a, it's a big, it's a human city. Uh, but you haven't heard of this, uh, this dwarven lord Nuris Grek though.
See, I haven't heard about the, that, that, that town, but I'm more interested in, in, in bringing prosperity, in bringing train to prosperity or trying to help that between the Shire and our folk.
Um, at that, they, uh, they, they say, hear, hear, and they slam their, their mugs down on the table and everything.
But you're gonna get them empty, which deserves another round.
Nice. Um, it, they keep it free and they, they insist on paying for it. Uh, it seems like all of you are very, very well liked. And, uh, they even pester you with few fusses, though they fuss with each other. Um, and then one of them is like, so, uh, the town hall tomorrow. I hear that you have a seat at it. I've heard that they're going to offer, uh, an, uh, and a rank for all of you.
It's news to us, of course, right?
They didn't say.
That's news to me.
Familiar with the, uh, with the term in this place.
Is that a good thing here?
Oh, well, it's, it's not a too serious of a thing, but, um, um, he says, uh, my name's Helen Ad, by the way, uh, um, he's got these big mutton chops and curly hair, um, hobbit. And, uh, and he's like, um, uh, yes, though, uh, uh, you, you know, it's just, uh, what people would call you here, just to keep things proper. Um, probably they've been calling you sirs, you know, or master or such, uh, but, um, I suppose that, uh, they might. I suppose that uh, they might be calling you goodmen, uh, since your title, you're landowners and you have a uh, a person that uh, you, you're part of of the Shire now and you're bounders, goodmen or selectmen.
Well, there we are.
Well, that's very interesting.
Well, we'll see. Uh, you know, uh, those uh, that, that order of good manners is real particular about that, those sorts of things.
Bishaw's really taken aback. He's never had anything like that happen to him before he's-
Been granted a title.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, and anyways, they keep uh, just offering rumors. Uh, they ask you about the human lands a lot and they bring up, they bring up different things like uh, they talk about Rebic, they talk about Countess Yestrey. They talk about, uh, like I said, the blood feud with the dwarves. Um, they mention Carnbaldar and the uh, the, the rumors of elves among the trees and uh, the strange ruins and the giant folk and they ask about all these like kind of far-flung lands rumors, like assuming that you're from, you know, the Evening Lands, right? Like you're not from someplace thousands of miles away or even worlds away. So, yeah, uh, they ask you about all sorts kinds of things you don't know anything about. And eventually one of them's like, "Well, where are you from then?"
Far, far away, my friend.
Oh, must be far indeed.
Bishaw's not the greatest storyteller, but he starts telling them of the uh, the realms of Stygia and the great deserts and the ancient tombs and giant snakes.
Um. Let's see here. Uh, you uh, you do this and the glow and uh, uh, the, the dancing lights of the fireplace kind of illuminate half your face as you tell all these harrowing and horrible swords and sorcery stories to these half hobbits. And uh, they all gather around and suddenly Bishaw becomes the storyteller for the evening. And they're all just enraptured by it. Uh, eventually, um, it becomes late. And uh, you uh, have to return as the uh, as the tavern empties out, back to Brandon's house for the night. And um, you're greeted the next day if you all haven't rolled all your hit die. So you should have a D3 and then a hit die for each of the teas you drank, each of the kettles of tea.
The uh, D3 that was from yesterday? Not today, or is this a different one?
It's the, it's just for, I just gave it in advance, you know, it made sense to me.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Yeah. Wonder if I can make it brighter? No, I guess not. Okay. Um. Alright, and then uh, the day begins. This is your, oh, but something happens. I forgot about this.
Oh. Something wonderful.
Um. You're sleeping. Uh. And uh, let's see here. Alright, um, Edward, you're visited at the foot of your bed by a woman and a flowing gossamer down. She's kind of a short and chubby for an elf, but otherwise has elven-like characteristics and ears. But without any of the manner of what you would have heard of elves back in Albion. Uh, and uh, in England.
You again.
And she's like, "Where's my money?"
Uh, "How much was it again?"
A hundred gold.
Oh, uh, "Got your money. It's in the bank."
Yeah, you want me, should I just go over the bank for you then? Am I your-
You're visiting me in my dreams, so I assume you could visit the bank however you want. Just take the money out, or is that not how it works?
You know, on my planet, they say something about assuming. That you, that you shouldn't do it. Because-
I see. Well, uh, in that case, come back tomorrow night and I'll have your gold.
You know, I didn't wanna have to do this, but I think that you're going to need to see how this works for a week at least. And and uh, let me see here. Hmm.
Not gonna turn this armor into a dress, is she?
I hope she does.
Why don't I get out this book? This is a good book for- Whoa!
Oh no!
It's a big book.
Wait, what are you reaching for that there for?
The Table of Contents is so hard to read and use though. Um. I need magic.
Whether I want you to succeed on a spell check or fail on a spell check here.
I think, so actually make a uh, spell save just to see if this, uh, what, to what effect it would, it would ha- what, what effect it would have. Save versus uh-
Fail. I have to roll, I have to roll under, right?
Yeah, no, 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 you roll over for a save.
Hey, great, I succeeded.
Great, okay, so I'll use the lesser of the two tables.
Your bunny ears are only half as long.
Uh, and roll a D10.
A D10? It's a nice, oh, there, got one laying there, good. A nine.
A nine. Uh, and then roll a D4.
One I gotta dig out. Three.
Three. Uh, she snaps her fingers and all of your hair on your entire body just falls off, including your eyebrows. And she's like, "The next time I come here in a week, I need my gold ready." It's 200 gold. And then you uh, she disappears and you, huh, you wake up and you don't have any hair. There we go. When you all woke, wake up the next day, you see that Edward has no hair, including no eyebrows.
Bishaw looks at him and says, "You too?"
Oh yeah.
We, we can see if the hobbits have so, like, you know, some charcoal or something, we can draw some eyebrows on you maybe, is that-
So just, just, we'll just tell him that some fairy did it, which is basically true.
I think you paid her half last time and, but gave her a song, right? So it was 50 gold that you gave her and then you did a song for her, isn't that right?
So, that sounds familiar, yeah.
And then I think that you owe her a thousand gold. I think it's a thousand, or is it? I can't hear somewhere. Two thousand, two thousand gold.
Gosh.
A hundred gold a week, under her pillow, under your pillow.
Under the pillow, okay.
Alright.
Alright, Bishaw realizing that he's not gonna get any explanation just goes about his day.
Alright, now we'll question it.
That long silence happens in character where everybody's just sitting.
You were, you were-
Edward's just like, alright.
You were so convincing. I, I thought it had happened to you. I thought this is just something that happens at this. I didn't, I didn't pay off my death insurance.
Bishaw doesn't understand, he goes about his day.
Yeah, so Dave and, and before I offered, I said, "Okay." I had all kinds of weird rules, actually. And then at the end of it, I was like, "Let's just go back to to O S E." But, but during that, I had all kinds of rules. And so one of the things was like, if you didn't want death at zero hit points, I offered death insurance for the first two levels cause they were going into this tower into a magical gate and the people there were like, "We'll do something to help you if you get in trouble, but you're gonna owe us." And uh, uh, Edward's not exactly sure, but he did die in there and then was brought back by these people. And so then now this, this woman, this like half elven chubby woman visits him in his dreams once a week and if he doesn't put a hundred gold under his pillow, she, she does things like that.
Guess so. Well, nothing for it. Move on with play.
Warp, warp tooth fairy.
Alright, uh. Uh, you have a whole day ahead of you too. Uh, it's the 14th, it's the 14th day you've been in the Evening Lands. Um. This evening is the uh, the town hall meeting. Is there anything else you wanna do? Or we can just move forward to the town hall meeting?
Heal up again.
Okay. Um, you know what? I'll say that if you spend the day resting and healing, um, that you can do another D3. Or I'll, no, I'll say another hit die, actually, cause you're, if that, cause that's all you're doing. You're just sitting and you're working on healing and stuff and you know.
Max roll.
Oh, nice.
Live again.
Still three short, but it'll do for now.
Alright, okay, uh, you take the time to heal and um, that brings us to uh, um, to the town hall meeting. Now, the town hall meeting here is interesting because uh, a lot of the people that you know and respect aren't, aren't present for the town hall meeting because they don't, they're not really considered to rank quite so highly, you know?
Reminds me, we were supposed to get uniforms. We were supposed to get your clothes before we go, so.
He has those. So you have uh, Edward, you have a very charming outfit and um, Bishaw, however, does not have one. Tharnlin has an interesting mixture between uh, a worker's outfit and a three-piece and Ben has like a cape, uh, but it's like ver- like, has embroidery, like um, what do you call it? Like it's embroidered on the edges and it's felt and it looks really nice. Uh, and then you have Le- Lin- Lederhosen down at the bottom. And nice shoes and stuff.
Pop my little suspenders or whatever, yeah.
Yeah. And uh, alright, yeah, everybody's dressed fancy except Bishaw though. Uh, and um, uh, and everybody else in town, uh, this has been quite the time for the town because uh, other than the bounders that are manning the walls itself, everyone else takes this as a holiday. Uh, because many of the people uh, important to the town are at the town hall meeting. So everybody else is drinking and having a good time. Uh, and meanwhile, a select group go into the town hall and they represent all of the various clubs. Um. You see a bunch of hobbits that you don't know. You see some that you do. Uh, you see that there's Bril seated at the head of the table. Of course, there's Roartrude here and uh, two or three other fancy, fancily dressed women hobbits. Fridolin Ev- Evard, of course, is here, along with his teller Turpin. And uh, Hartmut is here and um, um, and a bunch of people you don't recognize. Uh, you also have um, uh, William, William, the mathem keeper, the mathem housekeeper's here. Uh, and Cedric, as well as uh, Bentley. But not, but not Quinn. And then some people you don't recognize. And um, uh, as you uh, as you come in, uh, you're offered seats. Um. And uh, Roartrude uh, comes over and she says, "Now listen here. Don't worry. We'll make sure this public safety initiative passes. But the trick is they've put it at the end of the agenda, despite all of my efforts."
From the very first touch-
Hold on. What in the world? Sorry, I had an ad come up. Um. So, uh, sorry, this is the Roachard voice. Uh, so, uh, what we need to do is we need to ensure that this runs speedily and we can't allow other problems to interfere with our business here. If you take my meaning.
Um, not entirely.
Oh. Well, other hobbits have other items on the agenda, quite a few in fact, many of which have not been resolved. It's possible that quite a fuss could begin. And in so doing, it could take up all of the time and the town hall is set to end at the final evening bell. When that happens, no matter what ha- what has been covered in the agenda, the town hall meeting is closed. And our item has been placed at the end of the agenda.
Well, then we better make sure things speed right along, right?
I agree. I'll do everything that I can. And she nods at you and goes and sits down.
Beginning to smell a rat from old Ger- old Roachery there.
Um. Bril is like, "Alright." Uh, thus begins uh, the town hall meeting uh, for this uh, the, the uh, 26th of the reaping. Uh, and uh, the first thing is uh, uh, Hartmut, uh, do we have any uh, do we have any important items on the, that, that we need to discuss from the last town hall meeting that happened uh, um, a season ago? And then uh, Hartmut's like, uh, "Nope, nothing to talk about." Uh, and then actually some, somebody like interjects and they're like, um, "Now hold on just a minute, that's not right. We have some, a lot of things that, that weren't solved the last uh, the last time we met." And uh, and then um, Bril is like, "I know, I know, but that's on the agenda. There are items from last time. Uh, of course, we'll discuss those, but why don't we just uh, we go ahead and get started uh, right after we have tea." And then they actually, so they like start the meeting and they start like the, the process of the meeting and then they completely stop the meeting and then have tea. And that takes about an hour. Um, and then uh, let's see, and it's now afternoon and uh, the first thing is um, uh, a hobbit comes forward and he says, um, um, let me bring this back up again. He says, "Uh, my name is Hunald and as you know, I am the town peat cutter." And everybody's nods like, "Yeah, hmm, yeah." And he's like, "We gotta have more peat cut come the winter. It's coming up next season. But to do that, we need iron. Cause I can't cut peat without peat cutters as a peat cutter." And then uh, somebody's like, um, uh, "Hey, wait, actually, we have a dwarf here. Uh, you sir," and then points to Tharnlin. "Hey Dave."
Sorry. Going through this book, sorry.
Yeah, the hobbit's like, the hobbit is like, "Obviously, we've got a dwarf here, so uh-
Horse, horse!
Yeah, wha- what uh, what's the, so what, what's delayed the uh, uh, the shipments coming for, from the, the metal shipments?" And I mean, in reality, you, you don't know, like, you know, you came here to actually try to find out. You do know that like goblins destroyed the last caravan. You've saw that, you saw a bunch of dead dwarves.
You mean that, like, this up the river? The, those, those shipments, they should have come from that direction? And I did, I, I kind of relayed the story of what we had seen.
Uh, there's, there's mumbling and stuff and then, uh,
Those goblins we'd seen.
That.
And attacked that caravan.
The same hobbits like, well, that won't do. What, what's your plan to deal with the, uh, the, the goblins?
What army? I'm, okay, um. Well, it would be nice if so, if we might have some volunteers, we might consider dispatching them ourselves, but you know, there's a lot of goblins up there. I mean, some assistance from the town might be of some, might be of use.
An old man is sitting.
Or.
He's kind of portly too. And he's like, are you suggesting we raise the hobbitry at arms? He's got a beard, old hobbit man.
That sounds like an absolutely capital idea. I didn't even know such things existed.
He's nodding, smiling.
Bet you have a militia of some sort here for town protection.
Ah, the militia, yes, the hobbitry at arms raised in times of war, yes. That's absurd. We haven't done that in generations. Uh, we, we couldn't possibly do that.
Well, uh, i- if I may say, we were just at the Goblin Fortress yesterday. And it seemed transparently clear that they have finished preparations for an all out assault on your village. This sh- this very Shire, I would expect it to come soon.
It came once and some, some of you made it, some of didn't. Next time may not be much left standing.
Strangely, uh, at this, uh, so this actually moves the, uh, the agenda along, but, um, uh, Bentley, the owner of the clumsy fox who you know, we're on friendly terms with, he's like, uh, I'm sorry, but, um, I think that, uh, that agenda item is not until later point of order. And he smiles at you all. And, um, and then, uh, Brill is like, well, we'll go on to the next item then. Um, and this takes about, um, so this is a, is a turn, if you will. So this takes about 10 minutes. And, uh, let's see, the next one is, uh, uh, um, is, uh, who is? Not Gil, who is it? Bosco. Uh, comes in and he says, uh, we got, uh, we got, um, fencing out there, the, and the, the livestock keeps getting loose because the, we can't, the shepherd pins can't latch because we ain't got no metal. If we don't get metal, we can't get, uh, pins and we can't get latches and without latches, we can't get good fences. And that means that, uh, they get spooked and they get, they've been getting spooked.
I may, uh, may I interject, good sir? Well, it seems that this is the same problem as the previous i- agenda item, the problem of the metal, for which that's the same answer, the problem of the goblins. Shall we move on?
Um, what's your charisma model? Actually.
Plus one.
Yeah. Um, they, uh, Roartrude actually in- interjects and she says, I agree. I think that this item needs to be deferred because it's related to the first one. And then, uh, Brill looks through his, uh, like his procedures for this. You remember Brill is new, by the way, and he's young. Um, and he's like, uh, oh, oh, I, I guess. Okay, well. And, uh, alright. Well, um, the, the next item we have is, uh, Ruethild, uh, Ruethild. Um, and Ruethild is this, uh, this, uh, lovely hobbit woman. Um, uh, she says, um, uh, yes, um, my pet queen bee, uh, at, at our, uh, methier, uh, it, uh, it's just going nuts. And we can't get any honey. And it jeopardizes the whole season and the next, uh, and the next season, uh, and the winter. The queen bees just bouncing around acting crazy. And then like all the other hobbits, they start taking time making suggestions on how they could try to soothe, uh, the queen bee, like singing its songs. Uh, or making nice smells. And then one of the, yeah.
You know what bees hate? Goblins.
Oh, I, I, I think, uh, this is a, a worthy endeavor.
Okay, what, what are you gonna say, Edward?
Worthy endeavor, as I enjoy mead as much as the next man or hobbit. Nonetheless, I must suggest that we move on to the next agenda item. And promise that we will attend. Our group here will attend to the problem of your bee queen after that has been settled.
She looks very pleased, uh, with the promise, which I'm gonna write down. Promise.
I, I whisper to you all, it probably has something to do with the fairies or the dragon or something. Everything's connected here.
Um, always fairies.
And, and this is going really well because you're only 30 minutes into the meeting. Uh, and the whole meeting is maybe two and a half hours long and you're already three agenda items in of about 10.
That's how you know this is a fantasy game.
Yes. Um, but, uh, Bentley, uh, politely stands and he says, I'm so sorry, but, uh, I, I had hoped, um, uh, it seems that these, uh, agenda items keep getting deferred, uh, um, which is, uh, I suppose, okay, but, um, uh, I don't mean any offense, my friends, but you are junior members of, of the town hall and, um, well, we hadn't even gotten to that item yet, actually. So, um, I am just a little concerned that maybe our community members aren't being heard about their concerns.
Oh, I think.
So you agree that we need to hurry up and get to the, we, we should become part of the community so to better be in order and, you know, proper, correct? Is that what you're suggesting?
Roachard.
Seconded.
Roachard is like, uh, uh, everybody is listening to you, interestingly, you know, like, uh, you've had enough of an impact and you're dressed well and everything else. Um, but Ro- and Roachard, uh, she stands up and she's like, I agree. It's not that, uh, uh, lis- uh, um, uh, dear Bentley, it is not that our, our, uh, Shire members, uh, voices are, don't, don't matter. It's that many of these problems might be able to be solved together. And besides that, they've even promised to fix the problem with the queen bee. How charitable. Could you say the same Bentley? Uh, and at this Bentley blushes but forces a smile and sits down. And, um,
I bow deeply to Roachard.
Um, she, uh, uh, she feels really uncomfortable with this because that's a very big person thing to do and she, she kind of nods and then sits down. Um, and, uh, the next thing is actually from, um, uh, from Fridolin Evard the third. Who says, greetings, everyone. Um, it is, uh, uh, that season again that, uh, uh, it's important to remind the Shire of our financial status. And your humble bank would like to, uh, let you know that we'll continue to invest in this Shire and the, the commonwealth of hobbits that exist across the evening lands. Brandon'sford will make it through these difficult times, we're sure. However, uh, I do have to, at least as my duty, uh, uh, providing the, uh, uh, services of the bank here to remind you all that the Shire is overdue in interest of 10,000 silver pennies to the bank. Um, now, uh, please, uh, don't be concerned and we can just move on from this item. Um, we can certainly defer those payments until the crisis is averted for the harvest.
He's just a small hint right here to help them get their medal back, just a tiny hint.
Yeah, so that's, uh, 10,000 is, uh,
A thousand gold.
Thousand gold.
Yeah. Oh, is that right? No, it's 10 to one, 10 to one, right?
We can, I whisper to Bishaw, couldn't we pay that off right now?
We can pay that off right now. You guys want to?
Question, uh, Master Everard. What, what? What it went, what happens when that is paid in full?
Oh, well, if it's paid in full, the Shire would be solvent. And, uh, uh, more borrowing could happen and, uh, um, uh, well, um, with enough money in the bank, uh, uh, there would be, um, more, uh, more silver, uh, that would be available, uh, to businesses and, uh, uh, people, um, here in the Shire.
Right, Bishaw leans in and says, maybe we should, uh, have that item wait until after that we can re-estate gold.
Yeah.
And, and leans in a little quieter and overthrow the banker. We can own this town.
Our level three now, every shot. And it's like, oh, we're gonna take over the town now, yeah.
Oh, I don't know if I wanna.
Hippity snu, it's time for a coup.
We didn't come here to rule anything. We came here to find out the fate of the dwarves, remember? But, uh, I agree that, uh, that, that the economy should be freed up somewhat from the singular grasp of Mr. Everard. In any case, uh, uh, Mr. Everard, I, I'm so glad that you offered to defer the issue, um, as indeed everything hangs on haste.
Indeed. Uh, he, he smiles and nods at you and then he sits down. Um, everyone in the, the room, uh, or at least, um, uh, Roachard offers nothing to this. Uh, Brill looks kind of nervous. Um, and, uh, Cedric, or I'm sorry, not Cedric, Bentley, for example, is completely silent as well. And then, uh, let's see. Um, one of the hobbits in a suit, uh, uh, he sits up and he's like, I, my name is, uh, uh, Burcard Diggle and, um, and, and I'm just happy that that dwarf is here today because I have multiple grievances outstanding with the dwarves that have come through. And, um, I, there's a problem, if you ask me, with, uh, with Warwick. Uh, now, I, I, I'm not speaking ill of another hobbit. It's not what I mean to do, except to say that, uh, I think that these dwarves are, are part of this problem. That, that's why we're not getting metals in and trade. Uh, there's something afoot with the dwarves. I heard them when they got drunk here, uh, two months ago, that there were strange things going on up north. And anyways, they owe me money. And they never paid it back. And it's been, two, it's been a season since, and I brought this up at the last meeting and I haven't received any remedy since then. And there's a dwarf here now and you sir, I think, I think that, 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 the, the dwarven tradesman should, you should pay, uh, and interest, if you ask me.
Bishaw stands up and says, as we are not yet junior members, uh, we cannot, uh, yet attend to this point, uh, motion to move forward.
Oh, because, uh,
We're not junior members yet, right?
And he, yeah, and he says,
Can't even address them.
They're, they're baffled, uh, as, as like Bishaw suddenly turns their, their parliamentary procedure on top of them that they had mentioned before. And this guy's like, uh, he's like, well, the, the dwarf is a, is a member of your, your group. Uh, he, he belongs to some organization that, uh, what, what then is your organization? I hear, out of character, here's the moment when you all could have a name. Some ways that.
Oh, um, the, the s- s- Stone Mountain, um, Guild.
Boys.
The Stone Mountain Guild?
The Stone Mountain Boys.
The Stone Mountain Boys. Except because you're in the Shire, it's gotta be something like the, the Stony Mountain Lads or something like that. And then it could be
Yeah, yeah.
Boys, once you get in the human lands, yeah. Uh, do you, so, okay, so if you say that, he's like, the, the Stone Mountain Lads, uh, uh, I'd, I'd have not, oh. And he sits down defeated, uh, because it's true, uh, you're a junior member and, uh, it can't be resolved yet and it has to be done in order, so. Um, let's see here. You all are flying through these. So as these come up, you're like providing, you're, you're, you know, you're providing a way out and around it. And it's getting to the top of only, um, uh, just past an hour. Um, and I'm gonna skip past because you guys are doing so good. Uh, until we get to, um, uh, uh, Hartmut, who's like, uh, the next item is, um, the granting of title to the outsiders. Um, and then, uh, um, Brill is like, yes, and we, we've had a, a, a motion about, um, well, about how the town, uh, uses out, has outsider immigration. And it's papers and rules. Someone has, uh, uh, issued a motion, um, anonymously, uh, that, uh, we should review it and, uh, hold any recent cases, uh, uh, from, from immigration, um. Hmm, an interesting thing. Uh, one anonymous source is offering a title and the other was saying that you shouldn't be a member of the community.
Uh, that's quite a dichotomy.
Should we declare a conflict of interest here? Cause I don't think we can.
What can we say to, to anonymous sources?
Uh, at, and then actually, uh, Brill is like, well, that's true, um, uh, if, if, uh, if, if the person presenting the motion, uh, had presented it, uh, and it wasn't to a, 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 a member of the town hall, then, um, that would be one thing, but, uh, if it is a member of the town hall, it needs to be brought up, uh, onto the, on the floor, um. That's quite a conundrum. Uh, you, you're already members of the town hall. Uh, Eric had, uh, left us some instructions regarding that, as well as some, some other sources. Um, and at that, uh, Bentley, uh, stands again and is like, I offered the motion. I think that, uh, I don't think that, uh, people should just be able to come and join our community. It ought to be more of a process than that. It's not something that's happened in many years.
Bentley, the guy we helped.
Yep. Well.
Bishaw stands up and says, how's the browning?
Actually, no, I, I should say it's actually his competitor.
Oh.
And Bentley was racking in all the in-money until we helped the competition get their good booze back, right?
Right, that's fair.
Well, my good sir, it's impossible to argue with your sentiments and I would feel the same were any of our Shires at home uh, visited by strangers who wanted a place in our governing. Nonetheless, we have proved with our blood, and I hold up my fresh, freshly bandaged scars. I bear my arms a little bit, they, with our blood, our sweat, our energy, our force of arms, we have solved problem after problem for your, uh, for your community. And we propose to solve perhaps the greatest problem you all have faced since Brandon himself was here. You'll note, of You'll note, of course, that I bear on my body, and I, 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 I left the armor at home out of deference to this wonderful set of clothes, but I bear on my body Brandon's sword.
You, you show him the sword?
Yeah, I, 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 I don't, I don't draw it, but I, but I, you know, but I hold up, you know, the scabbard and everything.
Um, William, uh, looks at it and he's like, oh,
That's right, uh, that, that does look like the sword, actually.
And then there are some, actually some gasps.
We risked our lives, to which some of the members of your community can attest, as they were witness, to retrieve this item from the haunted barrows so that we could put paid to the goblins and the dragon and save everybody's lives and help everybody that we can before we have to move on to discover the fate of the dwarves and what's happened to your metal, another problem. So you see, I don't think it's possible, short time though we've been here, for anyone to have done more for a community. I challenge you to find any other, even hobbit, dare I say, if I may be so bold, that has done as much for this community in a year as we have in the last two weeks.
Um.
With that, I rest.
Rortrude, uh, she stands up again, she says, Yes, uh, you do, uh, what you say is in accordance with the rules, uh, master, well, actually, I should use his proper rank, um, uh, El, um, Gentleman, uh, Bentley, but Gentle Bentley, but, um, I, what's also in the rules is, uh, as a lady of the town hall, I can, I, I would like to raise a, a motion related to this, and since it goes into the next, um, uh, next proposal, um, uh, Br- uh, uh, Goodman Brill, uh, or I'm sorry, Shire Eve Brill, uh, if you would, um, could we mention the next proposal, please? And then Brill is like, well, I, I guess this is all rather irregular, but, uh, the next one is a public safety initiative, and Rortrude's still standing, and she's like, thank you. As a public safety initiative for the Shire, I would like to suggest, given the threat of imminent destruction by a dragon, a goblin army, the loss of all trade from our neighbors, and fairy spirits that haunt the forests where we gather our food and livestock and nearly every measure of what could have brought us wealth this fall festival and keep us alive in the winter, that this be moved to a Shire moot. And then like everybody, like it just, an uproar happens, and it's, it's definitely a hubbub. And then, and then like, uh, Brill is like, uh, uh, Rortrude, uh, there, there hasn't been a Shire moot and when has there been a Shire moot? And then William is like, oh, uh, William, uh, um, I tried getting that William voice. Um, uh, I, I suppose it's been something like, uh, bur- wor- um, maybe, um, hmm, uh, two hundred years? And then, uh, uh, yeah, and Brill's like, yeah, it's, it's been two hundred years, I wasn't even alive then.
Yes, and was that also because of dragons and goblins?
You know, come to think of it, yeah, it was sort of like that, as I, if I remember it.
Well then.
And then, uh, Rortrude's like, very well, I move, I motion that, uh, that this town hall meeting ra- uh, raise a thane and that, uh, the hobbitry at arms be raised for the common defense of the Shire. And she sits down, pleased, with herself.
They're making a Caesar?
What's that?
The thane, yeah, the thane of the Shire.
Yeah, and, and then actually to that, uh, Brill's like, wow, I'm no thane, uh, and, and well, we haven't heard from the commonwealth of the hobbit Shires in, well, in two centuries, uh, so who would even be the thane? We would have to elect a thane.
Let's get about it then.
Who, who would, uh, um, and at that,
Nob.
Or do you propose Nob?
No, I'm just leading in saying we should nominate Nob.
That's, I was having the same thought.
Pretty good idea, yeah.
He knows the history, he does.
We're allowed to nominate anybody, uh, until we're, uh, are, are we allowed to nominate someone or must we wait?
Uh, Rortrude, uh, she hears you and she's listening, and she's like, I nominate Nob Boulderhill. And then there, there's another uproar, and there, and then at this, um, uh, Bentley's like, I, I am sorry, but Nob Boulderhill is, uh, merely a master, um, and, uh, i- i- he simply can't be a thane if he's not at least an eldorman. Uh, and then, um, at that, uh, Hartman's like, no, no, I'm looking at it, there's no precedent. Uh, a thane can simply be elected, actually, uh, and, and Bentley's like, that, that's, that's preposterous, uh, the,
I would like to offer at this point, uh, I think it's fair to say we need not go over our record of achievements again. Uh, did I lose, did it, Ross, okay, Ross froze for me.
No, 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 I'm still, probably.
Uh, so, ne- not needing to go over that litany, I will simply say, we would not be here were it not for Nob Boulderhill and his tireless faith and the intervention of Brandon, uh, uh, to send, uh, his successors. And whether or not you believe that to be the case, that faith sustained him until he met us on the road and brought us back to you, and without him, you'd be even in worse shape than you are. I think he's the, he's one of the finest hobbits, and I've met many a fine hobbit since visiting this pleasant place.
Um, uh,
And I can also attest to his personal bravery.
Bentley at this smiles and he says, well, that seems like a simple thing, we, uh, should just put it to a vote then, kind of smugly, you know, and, um, he says, all opposed or all in favor of Nob Boulderhill, thane of the Shire. Uh, and then, um, you know, he doesn't raise his hand, but then a few things surprise you. I assume you all raise your hands, right? Um,
Well, yeah. Uh, if we're allowed to, I guess, yeah, we're.
Yeah, yeah, you, you can, and, um, uh, Rortrude raises her hand. Um, Hartman raises his hand, Fridlin Everard and Turpin raise their hand because you're in cahoots, uh, and they need the metal, and, uh, uh, and then, uh, a bunch of people don't raise their hands, and it would have failed, the motion would have failed, until William, the Matham housekeeper, raises his hand, and he says,
Nob's boss.
I didn't think much of, uh, Nob at first, um, with the loss of Dirk, I've had some time to think and, um, that sword is real and Nob Boulderhill knew it, from the beginning that these people were this, of the spirit of Sir Brandon. And it's thanks to him that that sword is now in his hands.
And he raised, William raises his hand and the motion passes, and, uh, Brill's like, very well, um, Shire Eve though I am, I suppose we should tell Nob Boulderhill that he is now the thane of the Commonwealth. Uh, at least until this crisis is over. And, uh, at that, the old man, uh, that was talking about the, the hobbitry at arms is like, we'll form the hobbitry at arms then. As if it's like a, kind of a tedious task.
Wonderful. This has got, uh, so, so, so now that it's a moot, does the same agenda still ser- in service or, or what, what happens next?
Did, did you say that in char- character Brill?
Yes, yeah.
Well, actually, um, with, um, with a thane, uh, he has sole control until, uh, until the emergency is over. Uh, at least with regard to the hobbitry of, of arms, uh, and so, uh, it's all up to Nob now. Um, since he's voted, it's all falls to him, except there was one motion we didn't finish, which was, uh, the, um, raising of your rank, uh, to that of selectmen, uh, in the Shire. Um, those that would have the big people be selectmen, and then like all the same people raise their hands and then most of the strangers. And then finally you see, um, Bentley look around and kind of like give this like uncomfortable smile, and he raises his hand as well. So you are all now selectmen. Um, and, uh, and yeah, uh, you have mobilized the Shire of Brandon'sford for war.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Um,
Have no arms, probably, but.
Uh, they've got,
Start gathering rocks, hobbits.
No, no, they've got the, those knight, the knights guys, right? Those guys.
Yeah, um,
They've got some store somewhere.
I'll, uh, let's see, just in the last bit of time that we have left, just so I know kind of what your all's plans are. Uh, yes, uh, so they're called the, um, uh, they are called the,
Knights of the Road or something?
The Knights of the Old Road, uh, the king put them in charge of, um, it says that a, a group of martial halflings formed this order based on an edict from the last high king of the old kingdom, uh, granting the, the hobbits of the evening lands, uh, uh, a Commonwealth, uh, with the provision that they protect and maintain the king's roads and bridges. Uh, but their wives are quick to point out that there hasn't been a high king in nearly a thousand years and that these are basically larpers. They're old men and they keep a store of weapons that are the same store of weapons that they've had since the last time they were actually used, and they actually do have like a bunch of for real armor for the hobbits and weapons and stuff.
Oh.
And they like go and drill with them and practice with them, but it's all just been sport for like two hundred years now.
I wanna go see Nob's face.
Uh, he, uh, he passes out, uh, and you have to carry, you have to carry him to, uh, Bran- the Brandon's house and, and, uh, let him rest, uh, because he's, uh, terrified and passes out from the horror and the shock. But, um, uh, any other questions before, I was, so my, well, my question would be, what is your goal for next time? So like, you've got the Shire, basically, uh, you can talk to Nob now, and Nob is like a single point of contact to do whatever you see as fit for the Shire, uh, what do you want to try to do next?
The big clue.
Go ahead.
Well, the big question is assault or defense? And I think defense would be wiser, uh, but,
Not gonna end the problem.
No, very, very vigilant defense, because again, if, I, I, I made it up a little bit, but I wasn't really making it up. I think that this has to be their target. It's, it's a big fat target. There's a bunch of loot to be had for free from a bunch of defenseless hobbits. And, uh, and, and, and what else would they be doing? I mean, in, in their, in this particular region, what other target is there for them? Other, they've, they've taken, the, the dwarves are gone. And, uh, and this is, this is a walled defensible place. And in fact, they have to deal with it. They have, they can't just leave it if they're planning on, uh, going on a campaign or something like that. So, uh, that's my, I mean, that would be my, but what were you gonna say, Bashaw?
Gonna say, um, what was I gonna say? Give me a second, let's see. Oh, right, I was gonna say, maybe if we leave them, uh, now that they're ready for defense, and then we start, uh, taking care of the, uh, the dragon thing, but, um, no, I kind of like luring them. Uh, yeah, get the, get the gob, no, no, I like, I like your idea, like this.
You made me nervous just now when you mentioned the dragon.
Uh, We, we eventually have to, uh,
Yes, well, the problem is, if we leave them here, you know, a- and, and if the goblins and the dragon are in, are working, are, are gonna end up working together.
Yeah, I read both that.
Then, then what happens if the dragon comes with the goblins and we're not there?
A way to find out if the goblins and the dragon are working, cause what are the, are the goblins avoiding the dragon or are they working with the dragon?
The only thing we know is what the one goblin said, that the goblin king could, could, could handle him or something like that.
Yeah, so the question is a big talk for the, is, I was just wondering, is there some way we could get the dragon and the goblin to kind of maybe not solve our problem together if they butted heads? I don't know, it's like, are they actually working together or are they gonna be more likely to just, is the dragon gonna kill our goblins for us? If we, if they were to interact?
My guess is the dragon wouldn't wanna be seen with a bunch of dirty goblins. But, uh, but I don't know, uh, perhaps, perhaps.
Likely to kill the goblins if it were to like, I don't know, have a reason to go into their little cave that, or their castle they, they were hauling up in.
Yeah. So maybe,
I'm hearing to frame a couple of ideas here, put them in concepts, I'm hearing hunker down, establish a defense and get ready, uh, cause you wanna be here, and then I'm also hearing gather intelligence. It's like two different goals, uh, to help define what's going on.
Um, going to hunker down, we need to gather intelligence. You can't, you, you, we have to be aware of the goblins' movements. So that's gonna involve, you know, some of the best hobbits out and about scouting in the woods and, and knowing if and when the goblins are on their way. Uh, meanwhile, there's the third thing, which is the idea of leaving them on that footing while we go with our magic wine and try and do what we can about the dragon, hopefully survive. That seems risky, but it also seems like it might be the best option.
I think we need more intelligence whichever way we go, cause I, all we really know is if we show up in the wrong places, dragon tries to kill us. If we, right, and we have weapons to fight it, but if we just go hunting a dragon and say, oh, there it is, it found us again, and it did fight with the sword and throw some wine sap at it, how effective is that gonna be?
I mean, we have to get it to ingest the wine sap.
Right, so we need to know where, where it layers.
Exactly. There's a lot we don't know. We, we know a little, we know a lot more about the goblins and where they are. And, uh, there's, so you said that the goblins were in like a ruined castle? Was it like well defended? I mean, in other words, was it well, you said ruined, did they shore it up at all, or, or is it pretty much just still ruined?
Bashaw, when that happened, you were surprised, so, um, you did not gather a lot of information other than what I had said. Um,
Okay.
One thing that is, the, the, well, some details you did see is you didn't see a lot of tracks. It looked like a lot of things had been dragged, that's why it was hard for you to see the tracks. And there weren't a lot of people out, there weren't a lot of goblins outside, there were like four, and then they ran inside. Um,
Then like at least a half dozen, you know, eight or however many came running after us, six, okay?
So, um, let me kind of frame a co- a few options here, so I'm hearing defense either way, like that's the goal, like in the end, the defense of Brandon'sford is key, cause you got this big tall wall, and now you've mobilized them, and that's better than marching out these little useless hobbits out into the field where they would just get massacred, right? I don't know if I'm on the same page, if I'm hearing, hearing it right.
I was asking about, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, but in terms of intelligence gathering, I'm hearing, I, I don't know if I'm hearing this right, you guys go and gather the intelligence or you send people to go do it, or both. Where I suppose an option is don't do that and just hunker down and, you know, wait.
Suppose we're feeling a bit of artificial urgency? I don't know how artificial. I don't know how urgent the dragon problem is. I'm sort of treating it internally as though it's as urgent as the Goblin problem, which seems pretty urgent to me. But so that's why I was thinking in terms of trying to do, you know, just get the get the hobbits to where they are. That they can defend themselves. Well, and then at the same time we go out and it should be hobbit scouts like always on patrol, always on like, it should be like, you know.
Okay, so what? And I would just bundle that into part of their defense, you know, right? So so I guess the question then becomes, do you send hobbits out by themselves? Or do you go out or do you stay?
How many hobbits can we get? Well, you know, we just went out without the hob without even our our two or three hobbits and got our asses handed to us. Maybe we could get at least one small regiment of hobbits for for some reconnaissance, maybe. I don't know. And.
Yeah, okay. So I mean.
Yeah.
We got three. But one of them is one of them is.
Is now the thane.
Is the thane now.
So we got two now. We may have promoted ourselves out of the retainer. Yeah.
I'm gonna I'm gonna.
We get like eight to 10 volunteers, you know?
For a dangerous mission to try to gather info. Okay. All right. So I'm hearing that you're going to try to take what resources you can, whether it's a few volunteers and Ned and Squints or not. And you're going to try to go out and are you trying to figure out about the dragon or the goblins?
We try the goblins first because the goblins might actually have some info on the dragon too. Potentially the dragon is probably not going to care about the goblins so much. Dragon is just going to try to eat us. Goblins will try and kill us, but maybe if we're lucky, we can also find something about the dragon while we're doing it.
So you know where their fortress is. So what's your plan to gather information on the goblins? Is this is this like a stealth mission? Is it like a heist? Is it? But yeah.
I think the first step might be just to scout. Maybe we need to scout their, we kind of found their their hideout and their hold up underground or in the in the ruins there, but.
We just need. Yeah, we need to go. We need to find out about numbers and we need to find out about. You know, I mean. We might need. We might need to get in there because if the goblins might not spend a lot of time outside unless they have to.
So what I'm hearing is obviously the you can don't worry the to the extent possible, the defense of Brandon'sford will happen under Nob's leadership to the extent possible. So you don't have to worry about like establishing outposts and roving patrols and a defense in depth and all kind, you know, don't worry about that. And you all are going to strike out to try to figure out what's going on with the goblins. Gotcha. And you're taking Ned and Squints and maybe some hobbit volunteers that are level zero. All right. Well, that's where we will end tonight.